I'd like to call to order the August 27, 2013 meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, and as always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if you would pray with me, we'll have an invocation. God, thank you for all the teachers, administrative staff, students, parents, principals, and support staff who are in the process of coordinating the critical tasks of educating our children. Give our friends on the city and county school boards the wisdom and insight to help welcome back the students in a manner that encourages respect, good learning settings, and understanding how important education is to all of us in Buncombe County. Place in each student's heart a burning desire to improve his or her knowledge, get along with others, and push to succeed at whatever goals they choose to set for themselves. Remind us all to nurture their quest to educate our children and support them in every way we can. Make our schools a model of calm and thoughtful discussion rooms where each and every student can be the best he or she can be. Thank you also, good Lord, for the 50th anniversary on the March on Washington. We appreciate the courage, wisdom, and direction these courageous and brave people pushed our country in. Help us to remember we always must respect everyone's rights to live, work, and retire in our great country. And help us to be thankful of the people that came before us, and how everything we do on this board and any other political office is based on the sacrifices and hard work of others who came before us. Amen. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by this board, it's the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts and potential conflicts of interest. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest with any matter coming before us today?
No.
If not, we'll proceed. We'll start off with public comment. The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave questions along with your name, address, phone number, or email with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of the commission or pertain to matters upon which we may act. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire board. Any polling of board members is inappropriate. Persons addressing the commission are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and to be respectful of everyone in the room. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting, and the commission reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the board. Is there any public comment tonight? Mr. English.
My name's Fred English. I live out in Hall Creek. I'd like to say something about my friend Bill over there. This is Buncombe County history. In the early 50s, me and Bill was in 82nd Airborne Division together at Fort Bragg. He was a military policeman, and I had a few beers. Bill was a whole lot older than me, and he'd show me the way to go home. Right, Mr. Bill? The reason I'm here is tax increases and pay raises. The value on my property went up. My taxes went up, city and county, and some kind of recreational bull crap they throw in there. And I don't think it looks good for me to have to increase my tax $200 a year, and you guys get a pay raise. Every one of you people worked somewhere and got good jobs and make good money. That does not look right to the people of the county of Buncombe and the city of Asheville, or anywhere else. Y'all needed a pay raise like Barack Obama needs a vacation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. English. Any other public comment tonight? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I couldn't say it better. He just got a few words, but he knows how to say it. He's older than him, so I'll respect it and say ditto. I do appreciate Mr. Stanley's service to his country as well as any honorable person that's ever been in the service. I had a brother die in World War II, and I know what a painful thing it was for our family for the years, even years later. So it's never forgotten. They will never be forgotten. And thank you, Bill. Two concerns. One is on the CRA. If you appoint four commissioners to head this thing up to start with, do the paperwork, you're in control, because they ain't but seven members. Then when you appoint the board, you're going to have three members or more. You're still in control regardless. So what the CRA amounts to is Buncombe County's got a cultural recreation authority, and it's theirs. They're going to control it, because if you're going to do the appointment of the board and listening to their conversations where they should go on there, you need to let this be an independent, somebody doing it other than you commissioners, because I think it's conflict of interest. I don't care what the law says. And I think you need to look into that, because to me, it ain't nothing but the fox guarding the hen house. I want you to look after my money, but I don't want you to say it's an independent authority and then control everything. You're just lying to the public. The other thing is broadcasting and videoing and recording in certain places. I haven't read all this yet. I haven't even read it. But just the statement, and I talked to Mike Frew, the attorney, and I talked to him about some questions, but my concern is this. If you put this into a situation that you can't do this, then I want to know why that you moved the county manager up onto the floor with the director of DSS on the floor, where you have got a conflict of interest right there, because the county manager should be speaking for the county and be accessible to people. And if you put her in that office, everybody's going to have to go through DSS, and you're right into the conflicts of the confidentiality of people. So why put her in that position to be moved into that area where she is right now? So I think she needs to be moved down on the floor with the county commissioners, and that's where she should remain, and it should be where people can access her. Not that I would violate anything. I know what confidentiality is, but she should be accessible to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other public comment today? All right, if none, then we'll ask for a motion to follow the agenda with the addition of the salary discussions under new business and the announcement I'm going to make about the county attorney's resignation. Is there a motion to follow the agenda with those additions?
A motion.
A motion by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Newman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then we will follow the agenda as amended, and we have approved the consent agenda items. Good news, we have a real honor today to have probably, I'm not sure if he's the longest-serving, but he's up there. I think he was, and maybe our clerk can tell us for sure, but 24-year veteran of this board, just a icon of Asheville, somebody. He's done every good thing that's gone on in Buncombe County. Bill Stanley has had a hand in him. That's just the easy way to say it. He's here today with his wife, Jane, and I'll let Kathy Hughes finish up introduction of someone that we all have great respect for.
Amen. That was a good introduction, Chairman Gant. Thank you. He is, was the longest-serving commissioner with Buncombe County, for sure. And when he announced his retirement, that he was going to not run again, we decided back in the summer of last year to take a walk down memory lane. And Bill and I sat, and since I had spent my 24 years with him on the board, we had a good time. We sat and we discussed his life in public service. And 24 years of that here, and as some of you new ones know, it's not a fun time all the time. And there were lots of times we talked about, some of it made it to tape and some of it didn't, but it was interesting, and my time with him was wonderful. That evidently related to video very well, because then we submitted that video to NC3C, which is North Carolina City and County Communicators Association, and won. And so that is what we want to present him today with the award that we won for that video. And since that time, I've heard from several other counties who wanted to mimic what we did, and saying that that was a great way to look at history and look at their commissioners as they leave, and to record what they've seen and the changes that they've seen across the time that they were there. And so if Mr. Stanley would come, we would give him this award, and then I'm sure he would like to say something. And I won't say number next, I promise. Talk as long as you want to.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You are welcome.
Thank you, dear. You did most of the work.
You are welcome. You did great.
All right. Folks, I thank you for having me up here. We didn't know about this, but of course, Madam Clerk did all the work on that. She had all ideas and answered her questions. And she asked all the right ones. I say evidently, we gave them some pretty good answers, I think. You know, and the thing I messed up on, I've heard from it from about six or seven of them. I couldn't remember all the members of the band that played for me over that place. Some of them 10 years, and I couldn't think of Steve Sutton, the name, and some others. But I was, she had me shook up out there bad. I'd like to say this, y'all, this is impressive. Y'all are impressive up there. And you really look good. I'm proud of a little part of having someone who put all this together. We beat Greg probably every other day trying to get it ready, I guess. But they did a great job. We got a fantastic mate and staff, great staff all over the place here. But the mayor of Hall Creek left there, so I can't say he responded to him, but I think I put him in jail three or four times. I can't remember. But that was a good time down there. Of course, where my wife's from, that end of the state, and we've been hanging around each other since 1950 or better. And been a good ride for us. But I've enjoyed my time here, no question about that. And y'all, and people ask me, they say, "Bill, what do you think of the new board?" I said, "Well, they're fine. They're doing real good." "Well, Bill, they're as good as you are?" I said, "I said they're doing real good. I didn't say they were..." You didn't hear all of that. I didn't say they were great. Think about that. But folks, thank you kindly. And Madam Clerk, you need to keep this in y'all's awards. I don't need this at home. I mean, I'd love it, but y'all need to have this on your, put it on your shelf down there, wherever. But thank you so much for recognizing that we did good work. Thank you, and number next.
Mr. Stanley was president of the State Association and could have been president of the National. I often wonder how that would have been, because I know every time we go to national conventions, to this date, Bill, they talk about you.
We should have probably should have taken that on way back there.
You'd have gotten it, I have no doubt, because that's, that was quite a thing. It's like being with a rock star. Every time we go out to a convention, I loved it, Bill, and we miss you here. Next, we have Commissioner Belcher is going to give a presentation honoring Korean War veterans, of which Commissioner Stanley was, of course, a vet. And he's going to give this to Jeff Foster, who came up with the idea. And I see you could introduce everybody. Jeff, thank you for the great idea. We appreciate you coming up with it.
Yeah, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation from the county of Buncombe honoring Korean War veterans. Whereas on this, the 60th anniversary of the Military Armistice Agreement signed at the end of the Korean War, we honor all who served in the Korean War and pay lasting tribute to the brave men and women who gave their lives for our nation. And whereas through three years of combat, American service members and Allied forces overcame some of the most unforgiving conditions in modern warfare, weathering bitter winters and punishing heat, and whereas we honor our citizens who served, including the tens of thousands of Americans who gave their lives defending a country they had never known and a people they had never met. Their legacy lives on not only in the hearts of the American people, but in the Republic of Korea that is free and prosperous in a world that is safer for their service. And whereas shortly after the Military Armistice Agreements were signed, President Dwight D. Eisenhower noted that, "With special feelings of sorrow and of solemn gratitude, we think those of who were called upon to lay down their lives in that far-off land to prove once again that only courage and sacrifice can keep freedom alive upon the earth. And whereas now, six decades later, we renew that call to honor and reflect. Let us keep faith with our Korean War veterans by upholding the ideals they fought to protect and by supporting them with the care and respect they so deeply deserve. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows, that this board does hereby acknowledge and honor the 60th anniversary of the end of the Korean War, and in doing, does hereby call upon all Buncombe County citizens to observe this anniversary with appropriate honor and gratitude to our distinguished Korean War veterans. That this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this 27th day of August 2013, Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe, signed by Chairman David Gant." And thank you, Jeff, very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Jeff, you will say something?
Certainly would like to thank the board. You certainly put into words much better than I could as a representative of the Buncombe County Republican Men's Club. Just the great debt of gratitude we do owe these fine folks, that many of whom gave their life in a war that is often referred to as the Forgotten War. Commissioner Stanley is representative of those who are here today. We certainly appreciate the things that you've done for our country and the representation that you have for us today of those who could not be here also. So thank you, commissioners, for doing this, and I think it does Buncombe County good to make this proclamation, and I appreciate your efforts to do so. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, next up, we have Greg Israel. Well, the county manager's report. Do you have any defer to Greg? All right, Greg Israel's going to give us an energy update. And Mr. Israel, thank you for being here, and thank you for your tireless work keeping us running.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is actually a update on an energy audit that we have going on right now in Buncombe County. And I haven't been before you since we implemented this, so I kind of want to back up and give you just the two minutes of how we got to where we're at. So at the last meeting where I presented, we saw how that our efforts are kind of flatlining, and that we're, due to all of our best efforts, we've hit that plateau, and we're having trouble getting our numbers to fall again. So it was decided that we needed to look and see what we could do. So I started out by talking to the North Carolina Department of Energy. I called, I met with the Federal Department of Energy and the NC State College Department of Energy. And when I explained to them where I was at, most of them, this is a catchphrase I've learned to hate, they said, "Oh, you've picked all the low-hanging fruit." And, you know, we went past that years ago. So when I explained where we're at, they reviewed our data to a T all of them, said, "You need to go further than we can take you right now." So they suggested that we contract with a firm that specialized in higher-level energy audits. Did some research, read some ASHRAE Level III audits online, and we decided that's where we needed to be. So we sent out an RFQ. We got 14 responses back, and started talking to these folks. And we told them we wanted the Level III audit, which is, it's the highest level you can get. It's just comprehensive. It goes through the whole building inside out and identifies all potential energy control measures that we could put in place. But we told them on top of that, we wanted them to bring us back a detailed plan that we could implement that just clicked off year by year. And we asked them to create a 10-year plan of how we could implement these measures that they found. So that cut about 70% of the field right there. They weren't interested in going any further. So we conducted interviews, and we contracted with Shaw Environmental Group out of Charlotte. And I've been real impressed with them. We contracted with them to do 782,000 square feet of facilities at a cost of $111,000. But Shaw came to the table with $45,000 worth of incentive money from Duke Energy. So we're actually getting an ASHRAE Level III audit of 780,000 square feet for around $60,000, which is a great deal if compared to what you read online. So that kind of tells us what got us into this. So where we are now, the audit runs July through October, and in the first two weeks, Shaw Environmental came up. We paired them up with, there was three of them and three of us, and they did the initial site surveys. And basically, it's just getting acquainted with the building. So they went and walked every square foot of these buildings. There were 10 of them that we had on the list, and just got a general knowledge of what was going on. During that same period, the Finance Department provided them with all the utility bill data we have and the way we've got it compiled, and we provided all the plans and specifications for the building. So that gave, took them back, and they came back the second two weeks, and they did a site-specific and energy-specific assessment. So they digested that data, came back, and then they wanted to look at specifics. They did that for two weeks. And so that kind of brings us up to today. On August 21st, we entered a 35-day period of when we won't see them anymore. They're back at their offices, they're poring over all this data. And on October the 10th, they're going to come back with a draft report to me. And basically, it's going to be a laundry list of everything they've identified. And at that point, we're supposed to go through it, and I can, you know, I can throw things out. I can say, "Well, what about this? You didn't check this." They'll take that in, and they'll spend about a week doing that. Then they're going to deliver me a final report. That's just the report on what they found. On October the 16th, we will meet, and it's called a capital planning meeting. That's where we're going to decide what we want in this 10-year plan and how we want it staged in that 10-year plan. And I talked to them when we first started this, and they reviewed all of our data. And I gave them a specific target number each year I wanted to hit in reductions. And they were very honest and upfront. They said, "We're not sure with y'all's previous efforts that we can provide that. You know, we're going to have to get really innovative to meet what you want." So when they come back with this capital planning report, I expect that they'll meet what we're asking for, but they've let us know it's not going to be an easy task to get to. When the capital report comes back, it will have the plan. It'll have the cost associated with the plan, and it'll be broken down. You can look at year five, and it should allow for inflation. It should allow for everything. So in year five, it'll say, "You need to spend X number of dollars if you want to accomplish year five." But the thing about this plan is, the way I'm having it set up, we need to build on it. You know, you need to do year one. Year one makes year two possible. Year two makes year three possible. So at the very least, if we decide not to implement that plan, we're going to have a great list of stuff we can do on our own timeframe for a much reduced price than a Level III audit that we would have normally paid for. So we've got about 60% of the cost in a Level III audit that will deliver us all of our energy measures we can implement, and then we can also go forward with this detailed plan if we want to. So saying that, sometime November, December, whenever the board meets, that's when I'm thinking this will be compiled into something that I can actually set before you and say, "Here's what we got for our money."
I'm sorry, Greg. Could you repeat what I just, I didn't quite hear. What dates did you say you thought that would be on?
They're supposed to have me, the capital report delivered October 21st. So I'm thinking, I don't know what y'all's schedule will be in November and December. So I'm saying November, December, we should be able to bring you a report and give to you.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I'll just make a couple of comments. I think it's, I think this is, I think this is pretty exciting, you know, from our retreat where we talked about building on what the county's already been doing in terms of energy management for our facilities and setting a really ambitious, but hopefully very achievable, long-term goal. This is, you know, a lot, because a lot of folks talk about setting goals and trying to do things, but then they adopt some resolutions, and then they don't necessarily, you know, translate into an actual execute on a plan to actually make it happen. And so it seems like this is exactly the kind of analysis and planning work that needs to be done to develop a really ambitious, but also very specific and achievable plan. So I think it's, I think it's great. I really look forward to seeing the information and seeing what ideas they come up with for all of these different public facilities that we're responsible for. So I think it's, it sounds like a great process for looking at where we go in the coming years.
Yeah, and I do very much appreciate y'all taking this approach to it, because if you read on the internet, you can read so many failed efforts. And it comes forth from, you know, it's a true heart, and it's, but it comes out of passion. "We will do this, and we will accomplish this by this date," but they don't have anything. They say, "Okay, now go figure out how we do it." We're going about the right way. We're going to figure out the plan and make sure that we can be successful in what we're doing before we move on it.
So once you, once you receive that information, then you'll be able to set realistic goals and give them the return back to the county and to...
I'll be able to tell you how much money it's going to cost and how soon we'll earn it back through savings.
Yeah, that's great.
I'll tell you, tell a story on Greg. I think it was last year, year before last, we went to a convention, and I came back, and it seemed like Charlotte had done a lot. They have the energy companies there, and they're trying to be a model city on energy. I got real excited, because some of the consultants were in Charlotte. And Greg can remember, I brought them up here, and I said, "Well, let's talk to Greg Israel and see what we're doing." And I thought, "Well, there'll be a lot of things that they'll tell them we need to do." And they were real excited about moving the ball down the road, and they, they really have a lot of programs. And they came and talked with Greg, and it was kind of like, "Greg, can you come work with us? You're doing all these things." And Greg's a real quiet guy. You don't toot your horn. But they told me, "I've never had anybody have it together like you do, and you're real quiet about it, so we don't hear it." So I know it's like pulling teeth to get you to brag on yourself, or at least tell us what you're doing on energy, but I want to thank you for that, because it really opened my eyes as to what you've already done. And we always want to squeeze and get more out of the toothpaste, but we want, I want to thank you for what you've done and the way you're doing it. Like Commissioner Newman said, it makes a lot of sense to do it that way, instead of just throw something out there and see if it sticks. So thank you.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate y'all's support in what I do.
Well, I learned, I learned about some professionals that we're doing pretty good, and we want to keep it moving. And it was almost like the adopt a string thing that I've told you all about many times, and I won't go over that story again, but it was an aha moment for me. Thank you, Greg. Any other questions? Okay, next up, under new business, I think we've added a discussion of our, the cost of living increase portion of our salary. And I'll recognize Dr. Green to tell us a little bit of background, and then we'll have a little discussion.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I had to count how many budgets I had done as I was getting ready for this. So this latest budget was my 20th budget, and over the time, we, for a long time, did COLAs, and a few years ago, moved to a Consumer Price Index adjustment that's measured at the end of December. And in all 20 of my budgets that we've brought you, what we've done for the employees, we have done for the commissioners when, during the budget ordinance, and we set your salaries during that ordinance. And that's what I brought forward in the budget ordinance that you adopted a few weeks ago. It did include a 1.7% CPI adjustment that was measured at the end of December, and it's the same that the employees got, the employees can get theirs in April, but we adjust yours in July. When you look at what that equates to, for the commissioners, it equated to $450 a year, or $8.65 a week. It's a minuscule portion of our budget. In your governing body budgets, it's three one-thousandths of a percent. It's just too small to measure, and the overall budget is, the total increase was $300,000. three thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. It's very much not just our policy to do CPI, but it's been our practice for the twenty years to just go ahead and adjust commissioner salaries too by the same CPI indicator. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about how we've done this or, or anything that you'd like, like to know about our history around that.
All right, this is something we've put on the agenda by consent of all seven. Does anybody have any questions at this point or any comments? Okay, since it is on the agenda, it is appropriate, if there's any motions, we can entertain them. Okay, go ahead Dave.
I'd just like to make a quick comment on this. We spent a, a lot of time in the past two days discussing this, an inordinate amount of time actually. And as, as I looked at this and, and I, I had to weigh, what is the impact to the county with this? And, and I think none of us thought of ourselves as employees, so it, it kind of slipped by us. So, had we been voting on it, we would've voted, all of us would've voted no on this. And so, as I look at this and I look at the, what is at stake here, not a great deal in terms of money, mine works out to seventy-nine cents a day. So, at hand, some people are gonna decide they, they don't want to do this on a matter of principle. A principle with me is, are we gonna let the news media set the agenda and drive this or are we gonna do it? And I think I have a problem with that. This board will decide what this board does, not the news media. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes ma'am.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
So, in order to do this, it would take, just very simply, if you chose annually to not accept this, sorry, if you chose not to accept this, then you would simply email you, you attach a power form or whatever and then it's just, we just don't get it or we do get it, either way, right? That, that simple?
If you send me an email, we'll go through HR and do the appropriate personnel action forms in, in the future as we're doing budgets, I'll have that discussion with you.
Okay, great.
Going forward.
So, so this will, this story has got a little bit too far out and, and as I've told, there's nothing against any commissioner here. I'm just the one commissioner that wants to stay the same for the next four years and that's what I asked for once the story broke in, in the newspaper. And, you know, but it's like I said, it's not a lot of money, but the fact is, is when I ran, I ran on a, a platform and I have to stay with my platform and, and for the people. So, no bias against anyone, anyone can keep it. I think anyone ought to have the opportunity to drop it if they want to and I think this is the easiest way to do it.
This motion certainly gives us that option going forward.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? There's a motion by Commissioner Frost, a second by Commissioner Belchers, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. We are now on to board appointments. We have elected during our pre-session to defer the Tourism Development Authority appointments. We have, now have three vacancies and we will be doing the, that appointment on our, let's see, our next meeting, I believe, the seventeenth. We'll also be interviewing these representatives on that date also. Is there a nomination for the Land Conservation Advisory Board? Chuck Klineger's been nominated, any other nominations? All those in favor of appointing former City Councilman Klineger to the Land Conservation Advisory Board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. He is so appointed. We have the Cultural and Recreation Authority, we're not gonna do appointments today. We are going to choose at our next meeting, which will be September seventeenth, who we're gonna interview and then we'll actually interview those men and women on October one. Airport Authority, there's one vacancy, we have six vacancies on the Cultural and Recreation Authority. I suspect that some of those will be filled by commissioners. The Airport Authority has one vacancy with the deadline of August thirtieth. Now, I would like to-
Chairman Gant?
Yes, sir.
One question on culture. When do we, when do we, before we interview, don't you think we ought to make a decision on how many is gonna be part of the Buncombe County or this board on the cultural committee?
Yes, I, I would say, my recommendation would be that we, we make, maybe make that decision either on the seventeenth or on the first when we appoint them all.
Probably seventh.
Seventeen.
Probably do.
I think we ought to do it early, that way, that way we'll leave the very point and whatever we point here and-
Is that all right there everybody?
Everybody has a number.
Okay, seventeenth then, that's what it's, thank you Commissioner. All right, on the, on the, on behalf of the commission, I'd like to announce that the county is expanding our resources with regard to legal services to more efficiently and effectively address commission staff, economic development and constituent issues. We've identified the need to provide expert legal counsel, leadership to both the commission and staff, and as such, we've created the very important position of senior staff legal counsel to work directly with the county departments in addressing the critical issues that will accomplish important opportunities and provide the legal reference and guidance necessary to resolve any issues in as prompt a manner as possible. In addition, we will add a part-time legal position to provide those services typically provided by a county attorney to directly provide legal counsel and address legal issues as needed for the commission itself. In order to accomplish the transition, we would like to thank Michael Frue for recognizing the important responsibilities and depth of service necessary to assist senior staff and for agreeing to transition into this critical role. For Mr. Frue to serve in this role, it was necessary that he resigned one position in order to take the new one. I'd like to read Mr. Frue's letter of resignation outlining his transition into the record. Dated August thirteen, two thousand thirteen, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. On September one, two thousand nine, I had the honor of being appointed Buncombe County Attorney. For the last four years, I've been proud to serve the commission and the people of our county in this capacity. With this letter, I am tendering my resignation effective August thirteen, two thousand thirteen, as county attorney, in order to assume the much-needed responsibilities of senior staff attorney for the county and its departments. In my years with Buncombe County and prior to my appointment as county attorney, I spent a great deal of time getting to know and earning the trust of Buncombe County Department Directors and senior management. I recognize that their responsibilities on behalf of our citizen are vitally important. I believe that I can bring the highest order of legal counsel and professionalism to their endeavors as we work together to forward these projects and initiatives that will increase quality of life for all of our community. I will continue to assist the county through this transition as needed. I look forward to working closely with senior county management and directors by providing the very important legal expertise necessary to accomplish a host of specific projects that are vital to the future of our county. Signed, Michael Frue. We will be advertising in, for two weeks, we have advertisements in the local bar. We also will be putting an advertisement in the governing, in various publications, I believe, Madam Clerk, is that right? The job description, I'll go ahead and read this in the, in the title. The title will be County Attorney Temporary Part-Time Position. Salary range will be four thousand per month. The cutoff date will be September eleven, two thousand thirteen. The job description will be, serve as the chief legal advisor for the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, reporting directly to the board, primary duties including attending regular monthly meetings of the board, review and approve as to form, agenda, items, ordinances, resolutions and other board-related business. Maintains knowledge of and keeps the commission current of changes in federal and state legislation and case laws that applies to counties. Prepares legal opinions for the board and answers legal inquiries from county commissioners as needed. Must be licensed to practice law with an extensive experience as a practicing attorney, local government law experience preferred. So, that's what we're gonna do. We have appointed a, a group of commissioners to oversee and, and help advise us on this transition and they will be reporting to us as needed. Okay, the next meeting of our board will be September seventeen, two thousand thirteen, beginning at four thirty PM. We have canceled the September third meeting. Commission meetings can be seen anytime on BCTV Charter Channel Two, ATT Channel Ninety-nine or online anytime at buncombecounty.org or slash BCTV. Mr. Acting Attorney, Mr. Ulller, do we have any closed session business tonight?
Yes, we have one item that we need to discuss and that would be to consult with an attorney employed by the county about matters which respect- I'm sorry, that would be to consult with the attorney employed by the county about matters which respect which the attorney-client privilege between the county and its attorney must be preserved, including, and in this case, it's litigation involving the county and there is one item that we need to discuss.
All right.
And that would be pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dash dot eleven A three.
And do we expect any action to be taken afterwards?
No action will be taken.
All right, then is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Jones, second by Commissioner Fryer. Is there any discussion? Then we will be in closed session, thank you.
He's just not resigning as a county employee, he's resigning, right now he was serving under the board. So, now you have to hire someone. It's gonna be part-time position just to deal with y'all.
Yeah, to keep us out of trouble.
Right, keep you out of trouble, right, right. It's a tough job.
It is a tough job.
Has media going after you and everything? Sure, I don't take it personally at all. I haven't really done the, I haven't really told the story on it. No, I understand it's not personal. I understand, so, all right.
Hey Jerry, I got your message. I got your message, I wanna talk to you. Just give me one minute here, okay?
Yeah, yeah, it's cool. You're gonna stay for another day, isn't it?
Yeah, I wanna come talk to you, just gotta finish up something over there.
They was two different ones, the, the mic wasn't on. You, you gonna have to have a switch in there that turns them on.
Probably.
Okay.
Or a buzzer to chomp on them.
Yeah. Or a flash of mic. You, he, he don't make attention not to be able to control it in there. Cause some of them, even if the mic on there says- I'll tell you what I'll do, Julia, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'm gonna get me a mic for this one. Put it on a little tripod, just take this little mic about that, I'll say that for two of them and it transmits back to my camera. I know it, but I'll, I'll pick it up. Then I'll put it on YouTube, you can hear it. How's that? Or I could make one say to them, Julia, you can- Yeah. I could get a mic and then put you one in there that people hear.
Oh, well, yeah, it would help me, so it would help the media.
Yeah, they, they supposed to fix things for the media or we can plug in higher devices. No, I ain't talking about a electric.
Charter cable.
Right, are they audio?
Yeah, the audio's on top.
Well, they just put it in, so they-
No, it's been there, it's been there for a good while.
Well, good while, that's clean.
It's been there, it's been there probably six months.
Well, I didn't notice that, I guess I thought it was plugged, you know, for media. Yeah. I heard it. I think it's crappy, you can't get a shot of people at the podium, cause you have to get it off the screen if you get anything. It's not right. That's okay, I'll keep it, still I do get it. Cause it ain't right. You know I don't give up. I'm patient. I'm patient.
All right Jerry, so what, what, uh-
What's up? What's up? What were you calling me about today? Right there.
Well, I know that, but I mean, what was the, uh, particular subject today?
Well, I think, I think I already went over some of them, I want to tell you some. Um. My, my comments on the CRA?
Mm-hmm.
maybe could do this right now.
Right.
And we think, yeah, this is here, is, uh, well, uh, spell that.
Okay, I think we're all here. I would like to read one more thing in the record before I take a, is there a motion to go back into open session? Motion by Commissioner Frost, second by Vice Chair Jones. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back in session. I did neglect to read one page, and I'll read it very quickly. We do, we, the commission would like to express our sincere appreciation to Mr. Frue on his past, present, and future excellent legal guidance and his recognition of how important this new role will be. As part of the transition, we will immediately post notice and advertisement for part-time legal services to serve our commission under the terms I mentioned earlier. So, I wanted to get that in there. Is there any other business before the commission today? Not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Jones, second by Commissioner Newman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Seven oh vote, we adjourn. Thank you. Next meeting, September 17.